Do a silent prayer in the place of allegiance and then we will quickly get to those presentations. So please join me for silent prayer. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
When they wish.
Under God. And with liberty and justice. Going to move that we approve in the minutes of the previous session?
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we have a solemn occasion on our agenda today. It is a proclamation honoring the memory of Corporal Adam McMillan. We have talked about the corporal and have prayed for him in the past, actually, at our meetings. And as you know, he passed away last week. And so we wanted to honor him with a memorial proclamation. And Sheriff, if you'll indulge, I'm going to read through the proclamation and then ask the other commissioners to comment to his service and then ask you to lend, you know, your perspective. You worked with the corporal, you knew him, and I would just love to hear your perspective on this. So without further ado, I'm going to read the proclamation. Signed by all three county commissioners, memorial proclamation in honor of Corporal Adam McMillan. Whereas Corporal Adam McMillan served the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office with distinction for the past 19 years. Adam was hired in 2001 as a corrections officer, was promoted to the enforcement division, and was currently assigned to the traffic safety unit at District Five in Anderson Township. And whereas McMillan was an exceptional deputy, who his friends described as having a heart of gold. And whereas McMillan served four sheriffs, received four sheriff's commendations for his heroic efforts and 21 letters of appreciation from citizens throughout the county for his exemplary career. And whereas McMillan participated in the Police Unity Tour, which helps raise thousands of dollars for fallen officers' families in the National Police Memorial Fund. And whereas Ohio Governor Mike DeWine has ordered flags to be flown at half-staff in honor of Corporal McMillan. And whereas Sheriff Jim Neal describes Corporal Adam McMillan as a true hero who made the ultimate sacrifice while protecting and serving our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, Ohio, is hereby recognized that Corporal McMillan was hardworking and dedicated to his job at the sheriff's office and to the citizens of Hamilton County. And be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners, in adopting this proclamation, honors, remembers, and holds Corporal Adam McMillan in the highest regard as we express a profound sense of loss. Signed by all three county commissioners. So this, as I said, is a solemn occasion. We deeply regret the loss and wanted to pay tribute to the service of the corporal. So many times, I think, law enforcement goes unsung in our community. And I know he died in the line of duty protecting the citizens of this county. And so we just wanted to thank him for his service and recognize the service. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues, Commissioner Somer O'Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Certainly proclamation is the least we can do. I just feel like, I wish I had met him, but I feel like I've already heard so much about him through the sheriff and also through the proclamation. So my prayers go to the sheriff family and of course, the family of Corporal McMillan. So I thank you for allowing us to present this to you, Sheriff, and to your sheriff family. And God bless you and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to express my heartfelt condolences. I'm so sorry this has happened. I express my sympathy to the sheriff's department, who have suffered a loss and certainly to his family. My heart breaks and I just want you to know that you all are in my prayers. And and God bless and keep you.
Thank you. And thank you again to Jim Neal, Sheriff, for being with us. I know this is a difficult time for you and the members of your department. And so thank you for being here and receiving this on behalf of the county commission. And I want to turn it over to you to offer your thoughts.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I would like to offer you the opportunity that Friday at the visitation, there's going to be a half an hour from 12 to 12:30 where it'll be open for dignitaries that wish to come to the visitation tomorrow between 12 and 12:30. Also, absolutely, the biography is to the T on Adam McMillan. But what I will add is that he was a 19-year veteran with the sheriff's office. He was a person who donned a smile that was that was, to me, it was a window to his heart and the type of person he was. He had a smile that you would never forget. Something else about him that is not really known, he's a World War II historian. His passion was that timeframe and he did a lot of study. And he was a historian on World War II. He also was a go-to guy in the sheriff's office as a observer for our aviation section. He was a trained observer and would help out. And on top of his duties as a traffic investigator, which he's been a traffic investigator since 2013. But he's taken on the collateral duties and assisting with aviation and that work. He is, him and I have somewhat similar career path because his career path kind of mind-mirrored that years ago, of course. But I was also a traffic investigator for 10 years. And a lot of what, a lot of what Adam was about kind of hits home with me. And we all, we're such a large agency and there's so many opportunities in a large agency. But between Adam and I, we have very similar career paths. And I had an opportunity as a sergeant to supervise Adam and as a deputy to work with Adam. And as a sheriff, I got to be the sheriff during much of his his career. In fact, his entire career in traffic safety, I was sheriff during that timeframe. So I'm just so proud of him and his work. And you're, you're correct, the letters of, the letters from the public, letters of appreciation and commendations. He, he was, he was a deputy that gave 100%. This was a profession for Adam McMillan. It wasn't a job. It was a profession. And he treated it like that. And he took advantage and became the best deputy that he could be. And took advantage of the training and, and the opportunities so that he could be a better servant to the people. And, and I want to thank you, I want to thank the public for their support as well. And thank the hospital and the professionals at the hospital for their services while he was in ICU. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. So thank you so much, Sheriff. It's really, it warms my heart. I will speak for all of us to hear your personal connection with Adam. And you know, it's, I know it's a terrific loss to you and the department. So again, our deepest sympathies to you, to the department, to the family of Corporal McMillan. And we will look to join you and pay our respects hopefully on Friday. So thank you so much for being with us. We really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And the service, just for everyone's information, is over at Spring Grove Cemetery tomorrow. So the next thing we have is a proclamation declaring November 2020 Entrepreneurship Month. And Commissioner Parks, I believe this is your item.
It is. Thank you, Madam President. You know, entrepreneurs are the, they're the bloodline of what makes our community grow and run. So I'm going to read this proclamation and it's pretty cool. So I'm going to read pretty much of it. It says, whereas November is Entrepreneurship Month, a time to recognize and celebrate the successes and contributions of Hamilton County's entrepreneurs and express our support of them in their work in innovating and mapping the future. And you know, through their intrepid sense of possibility and resilience and their unwillingness to give in or give up. Entrepreneurs from every walk of life make invaluable contributions to Hamilton County's experience of entrepreneurship. So since COVID-19, it is more important than ever that we give our local entrepreneurs the tools and resources they need to survive. And so we encourage you to shop at your favorite businesses in Hamilton County. Small businesses are pillars of communities across the county and often struggle with access to capital and sustainability. Find your favorite shop or restaurant and give these entrepreneurs some well-deserved businesses. So now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners does proclaim November is Entrepreneurship Month and it's signed by all three commissioners.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Somer Dumas, any comments?
As it relates to the proclamation, no. But definitely it's something that it's the heart of our business is entrepreneurs. And that's where it all starts, so.
Thank you. And I want to echo that sentiment and thank you, Commissioner Parks, for bringing that in front of us. Entrepreneurs are very important to the growth and vitality of Hamilton County. Thanks for having us sign on.
You know, that's how big businesses come into existence.
That's right. That's right. Very good. Thank you. Jackie, public comments are next on the agenda. Do we have any comments related to any items that are not on our agenda?
I have not been made aware of any.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Acknowledging that we've got a public hearing and I do think we've got someone on for that. But before we get to the public hearing, let's go to comments of commissioners, Commissioner Somer Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a, just a comment as it relates to COVID-19. If you will indulge, indulge me for a few minutes. COVID-19 was declared an emergency in Hamilton County almost eight months ago. And the governor wants the county at this time to make a decision if we go purple. It's clear that we need to make the decisions and eight months is time for a new beginning. There needs to be a strategy. Sometimes we have to make the hard decisions. Sometimes not making a decision is a decision. Over and over again, we've heard that if you do the same thing over and over again and expect different results, that's insanity. We can't make, we have to make the hard decisions. And we've seen that those three golden rules that we keep telling everybody, wash your hands, keep your distance, and wear your mask, obviously is not working for a lot of our residents in Hamilton County. I am asking or requesting that we have an additional executive session today or a special meeting to discuss the strategies to deal with the increase of the COVID-19 numbers. No later than tomorrow, but if we could do it today and our lawyer, who's on the line, Michael Friedman, I had read that open meetings, if there's a crisis, you can call an executive session without the original or the length of time that the public or the media needs to know. And I'm sure he will clarify that for me because it's certainly, we're in the middle of a crisis. One idea that I have as it relates to COVID-19 and dealing with it differently is to look at a mass media campaign using some of our CARES dollars and just mask for those who have not heard the messages through the briefing, through our meetings, through flyers, through extra testing on the news. But to actually hit the residents with the concept of if we don't do these things and more, it will be a catastrophe for this county. And that we can't continue ignoring the things that we're trying to communicate. But we need a bigger blast and a mass marketing effort to let people know the reality of what happens if you don't do those things that we've been saying over and over again. We can't just keep giving the numbers. We have to give our people in the county some strategies as leaders are waiting for us to develop some strategies. And Governor DeWine clearly said that he's not going to make any edicts or he's not going to make any mandates that it's up to us to do it. And I think we need to do it now. So Michael, if you could tell me, is that incorrect? Am I reading the Open Meeting Act clearly or do I need to be?
Commissioner, yes, you're certainly correct that a emergency special meeting could be called with limited notice as long as, and Jackie is aware of this, that the notice went out to the appropriate parties as soon as we determined that a special meeting was appropriate. Looking at the revised code, I'm not, given the information that I have right now, I'm not sure that an executive session is possible based on what you've indicated the discussion would be. However, a special meeting of the board certainly could take place or it could be something that the board could take up as just a by leave discussion item during this meeting if they so choose. But in terms of the 24-hour notice that is required for a special meeting, if there was an emergency needed to address something health-wise within the county, I think it would be possible for you to do that.
Thank you for that clarification and certainly would not want to, Madam President, have it as a by leave today. I think strategically, we need to meet as a team and see what strategies we want to use. So as quickly as we can make that happen, I'd be really excited about that. Thank you.
Okay, so I think maybe, maybe it's even a staff meeting. Do you, I don't know if you prefer exec session as opposed to an open session? Does it matter? If, you know, we were to put this on a staff meeting agenda or something like that? Or would you, you know, I'm happy to call a special meeting if needed or just talk about it at one of our regularly scheduled meetings, you know, and kind of hash through it.
Sure. As we develop strategy and what comes next, I don't know if we need to do that in an open forum. And we could, of course, the public would know what was decided upon. But it's really, as long as we, the discussion starts.
Okay.
However, the two of you think is best.
Okay. Yeah, I heard Michael say that it might not qualify for an exec session. So in that case, maybe an open session is a more appropriate venue for it. So why don't we put that on for a staff meeting? There is a lot going on, both, you know, internal to the work that we are doing as a commission, but also externally, particularly with the Chamber of Commerce, who has got a robust marketing campaign along with some help from P&amp;G and Kroger and others. And so maybe we can get some folks that are involved in that into our meeting to talk about what's already happening. And then, you know, I don't disagree that a strategy really targeted to the folks that are not wearing masks. They're not distancing. We know where the hotspots are. You know, I've just sent out a notice actually earlier today after the meeting with the governor to all the local electeds in all 49 jurisdictions to say, you know, they are leaders in their communities. Maybe we can, we've been communicating with them, but maybe we can elicit some help when it comes to messaging out to those specific areas where we have seen the increases, particularly in some of the outlying areas. So why don't we get that together? We are not meeting next Tuesday because of it being Election Day. So we can put it on as a staff item if you prefer than at the next meeting, which would be the week after next.
I think that's too late.
Okay.
We just need to deal with it now. As the numbers I looked earlier are going higher and higher than, than ever. We know they've already been going up, but they're even higher now, so. And I know we're not meeting on Tuesday, so I'm not sure when we can meet. But I think waiting two weeks Tuesday is a little bit too long to wait as people are getting sicker and sicker, as we know.
No, I, yeah, I get you. We don't have the authority though to close anything down or to mandate anything. The county doesn't have that authority. The governor does. So maybe we could take it up, we could make room on our agenda, maybe next Thursday. That is the next meeting that we have.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, what would be different than the briefings that you give? Like, like, you know, you addressed this.
It's not working. It's not working. And so of course I applied the president for, for the briefing. She can only do so much. But it's obviously after eight months, we need a new beginning. It's not working. People are not listening. They're not thinking. Even no matter how many people pass away or get sick, they're not taking it seriously. And so, and I heard about the other agencies that are doing marketing campaigns. But we need to really let people know how serious it is. We get somewhat robotic with saying wash your hands and do those other things. We need to put out a strong message that people are dying every day. They're getting infected every day. And so even though, and I'm aware that we can't mandate anything. I'm aware that the governor needs to do it. But we need to give a stronger message than what even the president can do, President Drehouse. And she's done all she can do, but it needs to be expanded regional, not regionally, but through our whole county in a stronger way. Because we're getting robotic with it. And so I think mass, a mass marketing campaign through the county, not, not just those other agencies. They cannot certainly be included, but shows the seriousness of all of this. She can only do so much and she's been doing it. So I think we need to step it up. So that's the difference for me.
Okay, so talk to me then about when you wanted to hit an agenda. So what, let's go ahead and settle the conversation.
Okay, so it sounds like the closest we can get then would be Thursday. That would be as soon as we could do it.
Yeah, and you'll have to communicate with my office as to who you want to bring into the conversation or, you know, reach out yourself. Just let us know and we'll make sure that those individuals have access to the Zoom through Bridget.
Well, I don't think I should take the lead on it. You've been talking to, you said, the Cincinnati Visitors Bureau and the other agencies that are doing their marketing campaigns. You continue to contact them. In addition, if I have other people I think would be helpful in that, in that, in that meeting, I'll certainly let the president know.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll put it on, we'll just put it under discussion.
Okay.
We'll put it under comments maybe for next week. We'll just have a conversation under the comments on our next agenda. Okay. All right. Very good. Is that it, Commissioner Somer Dumas?
That's it.
Commissioner Parks?
Yeah.
I have no comment.
Okay. So I was going to talk about the numbers because I think they're important. And so we are higher than we have been at any time in the past, as has been conveyed. Our week-over-week increases are significant primarily around positive cases, although it's starting to affect the hospitalizations and now the death rates are going up. Remember, it's a lagging indicator. And so we continue to be concerned about this. There was a conversation with the governor yesterday with community leaders, health leaders, you know, folks that are kind of in the trenches here, trying to figure out how we can message differently to folks, not only in Hamilton County, but throughout the state. And, you know, different ways to talk to people, different avenues of communication. So I've reached out to those jurisdictions, as I noted, because they are more localized. You know, they, they know these folks. And, you know, I, I like, I'm sure both of you have heard stories about people getting together, people, you know, getting infected, their kids get infected and it's, you know, it's, so some people just, I don't know that they're not paying attention so much. It's just not doing it. And so, you know, we spoke to the governor about some of the frustration locally and he shares that. So we'll, we'll see how we do here because today will be his press conference at 2:00 and we will find out whether or not we will go to purple or remain red with, with a star, I suppose. And really what that means, because it means that, you know, we're under a severe risk of spread and we should stay home as often as possible. But it doesn't mean anything else until he decides it does. And so we'll be, you know, tracking that to make sure that the residents of this county are aware of what's happening and know how to stop it, right? It's all, and I know it sounds rote, but it's the same stuff we've been saying. Wear a mask, wash your hands, and stay away from each other. We know what to do. We've done it before. We just need to do it again. So that's my COVID update. We'll find out more at 2:00 this afternoon. I do want to remind people that voting obviously continues and you can vote any day from now until Election Day. And so please make a plan, go vote. We're running out of time. But the Board of Elections is doing a fantastic job of accommodating people who are coming to vote early or are dropping off in the drop box. So kudos to them for all their work, 24/7 work that they're doing to make sure we've got safe and fair elections here. And then on a lighter note, I did go to a mural dedication. And Commissioner Parks, yes, you were there too, over the weekend. It's a building downtown on Port Street. It's called Time Saved Versus Time Served. And it was a dedication to returning citizens in Hamilton County. And Tyra Patterson was the director of the project. And it was really, it's one of the most inspirational artworks projects I've seen. It was their 200th, which I think is incredibly fantastic. But, but really a moving tribute to the folks that are returning to our community who we are all trying to support in their efforts to get back on their feet. So I was really pleased to, to be at that event and be part of the celebration. So with that, we'll move on to Administrator Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things, one comment and then a by leave.
I'm going to attempt to share my screen here in just a moment. But just in terms of comments, I just want to let the board know that we are in the final stages of preparing an administrator's recommended budget that I hope to get to the board sometime during the week of November 8. We'll look to present that budget formally, either at the staff meeting or the, or the regular board meeting of that week. We'll get with the board and let you know what meeting we're lining up for. But we're in the final stages of balancing. Some of the balancing exercises get into some moving pieces on the ground as it relates to county funding, some of which have, are some good news. I think some of the entire board is probably aware by now. But for instance, as we look to fund different activities of the county, like our, what has in the past been known as the Heroin Coalition, now the Addiction Response Coalition, that as we were preparing to budget general fund dollars for, or even levy dollars for certain, for certain projects, we got word that we received a million dollar grant to expand our quick response team activities, which is just great news. It should allow us to expand the number of days and some community outreach associated with that. So I want to thank Megan Gosney, Lisa Webb, Tom Fallon, and the entire Addiction Response Coalition for their, for their work on that. But those are the types of things that especially this time of year when we're getting word on grants, then we have to go back and do a little bit of remedy work on the budget just to make sure that we're counting these things in.
So that's good remedy work, because how many times do we get more money in?
That's exactly right. It doesn't happen very often.
It doesn't happen very often.
As the board knows, we've got a great team of folks that are constantly working on some innovative ways to fund various programs and expand the services we're providing to the community. So in this instance, a really good thing. So really happy that we can bring that to the table as well. So budget should be coming forth shortly to the board. Also, as it relates to budgets and programs, and on the subject of the COVID-19 and the CARES Act, I informed the board on Tuesday that we'd have some things coming fast and furious over the next couple of days and weeks. Have one today. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Hold on one second. Okay, so are folks able to see that?
Nope, okay.
Yes.
So this is a, in the board has seen these before. I wouldn't be sharing my screen, except we literally just got this put together today. And just from the perspective of transparency, if we're going to talk about it, I thought we'd show it on the screen publicly. But this is just a resolution amending the Hamilton County CARES Act. The salient portion of this, and pardon me while I scroll down here, is that it allocates into our CARES Act program a million dollars for the Duke Energy Center, Duke Energy Convention Center, for funding to make various COVID-19 and safety improvements, all with the mind towards as we do start to enter into a recovery period, we start attracting conventions, it's going to absolutely be paramount that if a convention or a group is going to want to come back to a city, they're going to need to make sure that those individual convention centers are equipped with the absolute state of the art latest technology in terms of protecting the population coming back into that building. So we have received an outreach from the Duke Energy Convention Center asking for some dollars in this regard. I briefed the board on it on Tuesday. All this does today is set aside the dollars in the CARES Act program. And Holly is working on, as we again continue to see dollars falling out from various programs, where we will take this from, we believe the capacity will be there in order to provide this. This is not the contract with the Duke Energy Convention Center yet. We've still got to work that out. We need to make sure they know exactly, that we know exactly what they're going to do, that it's CARES Act eligible, all that type of thing. But this at least provides us with the adjustment in the CARES Act program to bring that contract forward to the board at a later date. So I wanted to bring that to the board today so that staff could get working on those next steps with the Duke Energy Convention Center. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
No, this is great. No questions.
Great, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. The administration recommends approval. Thank you.
I will, all right, scroll back up.
Okay. It's pretty simple title.
I will move, we approve of the resolution amending Hamilton County's CARES Act plan.
Second.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.
And thank you, Commissioners. No further comments or bye leaves today.
All right, very good. We have a public hearing. I apologize to those on for the public hearing, we're a little late getting to it. It's the IBI Electrical Application Fee Increase. And so I assume James Noyes is on for this.
That's correct, I'm here.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, James.
Good afternoon, everybody. Today, we have the first of two public hearings for the consideration to increase the IBI application fee. IBI is the Inspection Bureau Incorporated, who does electrical and plan review inspections for the county. The ORC allows counties to establish building departments to service unincorporated areas of the township and unincorporated areas, including townships, and contract with other municipalities. It also allows us to contract with electrical agencies such as IBI for electrical services. We've contracted with IBI for over 50 years. In fact, Gaylord Poe, their president, will probably tell you how long they've been in contract with us. They do, again, plan review and inspection services for the county. However, their fee schedule is one which is approved by the Board of County Commissioners. They're of any, then, any increase or change in their fee schedule must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Their fee schedule also includes the many other jurisdictions they carry or cover. And again, they cover all areas within, many areas within Hamilton County, but also areas outside of that. The two main areas are the City of Cincinnati and Hamilton County. Those fee schedules are usually set at the same amount, and from there, they are approved simultaneously if any increase request. IBI collects these fees directly from customers, as I said, and the board will then approve any changes to them. We've received an increase request from IBI to increase their application fee from $40 to $50, a $10 increase. It's set to start, the request is, on January 1st, 2021. Currently, the request has also been approved by the City of Cincinnati to take effect on January 1st, 2021. The information I submitted to the board is included in a packet that should be available to you, and I submitted a few weeks ago and is available to the public to review as well. Again, with that, pursuant to the ORC, any change in the fee schedule, including the electrical fee here, requires two public hearings. And again, this is the first of two public hearings. It also requires a, the notification in a public newspaper for two weeks prior to this. We have submitted those to the Enquirer and the community press, and those were advertised for two weeks commencing October 12th and then the following week thereof, so the 19th. This was also placed on the county website. And we also placed notifications to the Allied Construction Industries, the Home Builders of Greater Cincinnati, and the Cincinnati Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. In the packet that you received and was received from IBI, they had included support letters from the Home Builders Association, the IEC, or the Independent Electrical Contractors of Greater Cincinnati, the Cincinnati Chapter of the National Electrical Contracts Association, the Greater Cincinnati Electrical Association, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, or the IBEW Local 2012, excuse me. So with all of that, I have not received any additional comments from the public or from any of the agencies we submitted to for this change. My name was on that, plus my contact information, no calls, no emails. The exception being from the Home Builders of Cincinnati, Dan Dressman contacted me to reiterate his support for the increase. So today, we have again the first of two public hearings from there. I believe that Gaylord Poe, who is the president of IBI, is present and likely willing to speak in regards to this during the public hearing. So hopefully that tees it up. Any questions before moving on to the public hearing?
I have no questions. Commissioners, questions before we get to?
Yeah, just one question, James. And I know I did receive all your information. What, when was the last increase and how much was it?
2018, they made some increases in the fees. And I think Gaylord could probably do, there was a few increases across the board, I thought, at that point. So I believe 2018 was the last time they came in. Prior to that, it had been quite a while from there. It was over 10 to 15 years prior. And I think Gaylord, again, could probably answer that question, but that would have been before my time. But the last one that I recall was 2018, and when we did a few other changes as well. So they want to substance it. But I do have that information here. But again, I believe Gaylord can probably address exactly what those were specifically.
Thank you.
Hey, James, remind us, who pays the fees?
The, the customers pay the fees. And in that case, the IBI requires electricians to submit those fees. So the, you have to be a licensed electrical contractor to submit and pay for those. And again, Gaylord can correct me on this. So from there, it is contractors who traditionally, electrical contractors, who pay that fee. And of course, they likely receive that fee from their customers thereof. So again, that, that's how the fee is collected. We do not pay any fees from the county to IBI, nor do they pay us. They, they collect that fee directly from the electrical contractors or their customers.
Thank you. Commissioner Parks?
Is there justification for the increase?
They provided a justification to us, which was in the, which was in the increase request. You know, they have additional fees that they have to pay. There was an increase, if I'm correct, in the, the IBEW hourly rate increase from 2019 to 2020. So that's a part of that increase in their contract. And they have, they have a union pay scale there and union shop, if I'm correct. And those are part of their increases in costs. Again, we do have one that was submitted. And again, that's probably something that Mr. Poe can also address in his comments.
I'd like that.
Yeah, thank you. All right, well, why don't we get to Mr. Poe? Welcome to our meeting.
Hello, good to see you all.
Good to see you.
So anyway, good afternoon on this rainy Thursday. It's good to see all of you and thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. IBI has served the county and its community since 1888. And we enjoy an excellent relationship with your building department. And as James so well said, we provide electrical safety inspections for the people of Hamilton County. So with the support of the Home Builders of Greater Cincinnati and the IBW and all of the local electrical associations, we are seeking a small increase in our application fee of $10 a permit. And this is to offset rising costs over the past three years. And these costs primarily are in union wage increases. However, the good thing, at least I think the good thing about this for the people is all remaining fees within the fee structure will stay the same. So it's, it's a little deal, like for a new house or a new Kroger store or a new building, whatever, to go up in permitting cost of only $10. But spread over a countywide organization such as ours, that $10 is a big deal for us. And it'll have hardly any impact on new projects. So on behalf of the local electrical industry and the employees of IBI, we want to just say thank you to you all for continuing to have us serve you. I'll try to answer any questions you may have. As far as the first question from Commissioner Dumas, I'm looking at a, a fee schedule change from 2013 to 2018, which was our last one. And I think to keep it in, just to keep it simple, a residential service change in that, in that fee schedule, or our net increase went from $73.23 to $75.25, a couple of bucks there. A new single family dwelling increased from $118.68 to $121.20. So that's a three buck a house increase. An apartment building went from $327 and change to $370 and change. And just one more, a commercial retail tenant finish increased from $182.83 to $206. I pulled this sheet just in case someone might ask. It was presented in our last fee increase. And, and those, those numbers that I just gave you will increase by $10 across the board per permit. But where it helps, I think, the most is the reinspection fees or additional inspection trips, or the, the way we compute the fee to do the building does not increase. It's only the application fee that increases. And if we can get this through, that will, that will help us achieve our goals of staying in business. And we will, we shouldn't have to come back to you for, I'm guessing, three to five years is my best guess. The best, the best thing about this, and then I promise I'll shut up, the best thing about this is the IBW contract, which is for all the journeymen electricians and us included, within this jurisdictional area. They received a five-year contract this last time, 2018, for five years. And I have the numbers, so I was able to project how those increases will go. And that's why we were able to do it this nice, clean, simple way this time.
Great.
So I hope that answered your questions. If not, I'm here.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Parks, do you have a question?
No, I'm good. Thank you so much, Mr. Poe.
Thank you.
Thank you again for being here, we appreciate it. I know we have a couple folks who are also attending the meeting. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand, and we will be happy to hear from you. Bridget, I'm relying on you to tell me if there are raised hands.
I'm the second, and I don't believe so.
Okay.
No raised hands.
Okay, very good. So thank you for the information, thank you for all the background, it's very helpful. I know we have to have two hearings on this. And so I, without further ado, unless there are any further questions, I'm going to move that we close this first hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Gaylord, we'll look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you. See you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. Do we have someone on regarding item number one? This is the designating financial assistance to the YWCA. Bridget, is there someone on the line for this?
There is, Debbie Brooks is on the line.
Ah, Debbie Brooks, very good. All right, thank you for joining us. We always highlight this when we do it every year. So thank you for being with us. Help us remember how important this is to your organization and to the folks that you serve.
Certainly. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you. Thank you so much for your support and this opportunity to speak to you. YWCA Greater Cincinnati is the only provider of domestic violence shelter and housing in our county. And we provide vital emergency shelter to over 400 survivors and their children annually. Our goal is to promote safety and healing from the trauma of abuse and help families achieve self-sufficiency. Domestic violence incidents have escalated since COVID, and at the start of the pandemic in March, we made the bold decision to move all of our shelter residents into hotels in order to ensure the health and safety of both the families we serve, as well as our staff and the community. Since then, we've remained at maximum capacity, and they've been receiving the Since then, we've remained at maximum capacity and they've been receiving the full array of services, both onsite and virtually, including case management, mental health therapy, workforce development services, children's services, food delivery and ongoing coordination of community resources. We also added a texting option to our hotline in order to make reaching out easier for those still trapped in their homes with their abusers. Of particular note is the impressive number of people we've been able to move into housing. Since March, 52 housing placements were made, which also frees up space for more shelter residents in the hotels where they're staying. This financial support is really vital to our ability to continue this life-saving service to the community. This year has been extremely challenging financially, as you can imagine, as our agency's been incurring an additional cost for COVID exceeding $85,000 per month. We are committed, though, to providing the highest quality services in order to ensure families in our community have the opportunity to find freedom from abuse. So thank you again, we really appreciate the support.
Thank you, thanks so much for what you do. I know it's very challenging, especially right now, so thanks so much. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you Debbie also for what you do. And when you mentioned about, there's only one facility for sheltering, I think that's an atrocity in Hamilton County and that we need to look forward to trying to find, I know where that facility is, but having a facility maybe at the other end of the county would be great. And maybe that's a futuristic goal for the county to look at an area or another building where housing can occur at a closer proximity. So certainly I thank you for all that you guys do.
Thank you.
Good afternoon Debbie. Thank you for being here and thank you for the work that you guys accomplish. So since March, you have moved 52 families into permanent housing. Whoa, that's huge.
Yeah, it's a big difference.
Yeah, 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 that is, that is really big. So yeah, I'm really impressed with that and just thank you for what you do. Your services are so desperately needed. And I hope to, one day, that in this county, we can provide additional services to these victims. So that's all, carry on.
Thank you. Jeff, is there any additional information we need here?
No, nothing, nothing additional, just a little bit of background. The dollars we're providing, is it something we do, as you said Commissioner, on an annual basis and it comes from fees off of marriage licenses as well as the applications for divorces and dissolutions, that type of thing? There are fees that are applied to those that through the Ohio Revised Code are eligible to be applied this way. We do it on an annual basis, think it's a great thing. And that's, that would be all the additional background I think the board would need.
What is the dollar amount?
I believe it's $130,000, which is I believe about the same as we did last year as well.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, very good. Well, thank you for being here, we really appreciate it. Gives us an opportunity to celebrate your work and to remember the folks that you serve. So thanks so much Debbie. All right, is there any other comment or question to any of the other consent agenda items?
I have no comments or questions.
I have none, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move then that we approve of consent agenda items 1 through 6.
Second.
Commissioner Dryhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we have completed our agenda other than the executive session. So is there anything further before we move into executive session?
I have nothing.
Just everybody vote.
All right, I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G3 to conduct a conference with an attorney to discuss pending litigation.
Second.
Commissioner Dryhouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Thank you.